Good afternoon, everyone. I call the Tuesday, July 29, 2025 Chattanooga City Council to order. To get us started, Councilwoman Elliott, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation?
Pledge of Allegiance is to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the minutes? Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, council, we've got a motion and a proper second on the minutes. Minutes will stand without objection. All right, let's jump into discussing our agenda for today. I know that we were all kind of pumped that we finished up our budget work a little bit early today. Good conversation. So hopefully you've had a little bit more time than you have in the last couple of weeks to look over this. So we have some items under final reading. If you have any comments about these items under final reading, please do hit your light. We will be having a second vote on the urban chicken ordinance, and we have a couple of mandatory referrals in District 7 and 9, and a planning item in District 9. Councilwoman Burrs.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hill. I just wanted to make some comments about the chicken ordinance that's coming up under final reading. And Councilwoman Henderson, we talked about this just briefly last week. I think if this moves forward, then I think it would be good for us to recognize a translation of the ordinance for the communities that might need it in some language other than English. And I know that Spanish would probably be the first one that comes to my mind, and I don't know if there's others that we want to consider, but I think it would be important if it gets passed. And then also along the lines of education, we talked about that a little bit, and we had a great presentation from Tennessee Ag that, again, if it does get passed, then I think it's really important that we're educating people on all sides so that the impact is positive regardless of the impact, that it is positive. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I did speak with the city attorney, and he indicated it wouldn't be a problem to translate this ordinance into maybe Spanish. I've also spoken with Lowell Hearn, our library director. What I'm working on is a partnership or a collaboration of the library and the UT Ag extension to host something there at the library so that we can furnish materials, backup materials through the library, as well as an educational component. So those things are in the works.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Elliott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilwoman Burrs, I appreciate you bringing this up. I think this also raises a larger question beyond just this ordinance about our accessibility. We have a very large, non-English-speaking population. We're 22% Latino as a city, so I think it may be worth us tapping into some of our resources. I know we have offices of New Americans that have translators, services as well, about making our documentation a little bit more accessible to those who are not English-speaking first. So just want to throw that out there, and also want to acknowledge all of our city employees are here today. Chief Chambers, you're a officer of slacken a little bit. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, all right. Okay, taking a look at ordinances on first reading. We don't have any tonight, so moving into resolutions, please hit your light if you have any questions or comments about any of the resolutions on tonight's agenda. All right, seeing none, we'll take a look at purchases. We have three purchases. I do have one question. Chief Chambers, we have a purchase item under our sole source purchases for the SIG P320 carry pistol. And when I did my gun safety training, I got to see a pistol like what you all carry. And so I know it's kind of special, but could you tell us why it's a sole source purchase? What makes the weapon that you all carry special?
So it's really down to the actual manufacturer. So SIG, like many other manufacturers when it comes to firearms, they will only allow one distributor in a particular region to be the sole distributor for government entities. So while you can go to Academy Sports or Sportsman's Warehouse and buy the same gun, if you're a government entity, you cannot. So they require us to go through accurate law enforcement, and have for a number of years now that is the sole source distributor for the region.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, clients. Counsel, do you have any other questions about purchasing? Okay. All right. Let's take a look then at our two-week agenda, please, counsel. I have two items under Public Works that are mandatory referrals that I do need to have a little bit of discussion on. So we have a condition for one of them that we're working on, and then Item B, also I need some additional information from... Typically, I would look to Karen for this, I think, because it's a recommendation that came out of Planning Commission, but if it needs to be public work. So I don't know if it's Jeremy or Karen on these. So counsel, with regard to Item A, this item, we have been discussing the potential of a conservation easement, which did not work out. Then we looked at a public thoroughfare through an abandoned area. That did not work out. So actually, what we're working on now with this mandatory referral is a land swap to allow the applicant to use a portion of the right-of-way, but actually swap us a piece that would allow us to continue to have pedestrian connectivity for the future. And so it sounds like with the legal team that we may possibly not have all of the details in time for this vote, but what I will probably end up doing is typing up a condition to add that will say something to the effect of this is conditional upon the acceptance and completion of the land swap.
Land swap based upon a map that will be attached.
Exactly. So we'll have that for you all next week. Item B, Jay.
Yes, ma'am.
I have spoken with the applicant on this, and the applicant's property sits on the right-of-way. And so what the Planning Commission recommended was not the full parcel as requested, but a six-foot section. And the... So I noticed two things about this. First of all, the way that this ordinance reads, it sounds as if the full length, the six feet by, I believe it's 139 feet, it looks to me like the way this is written, it goes the full length of that block from Parcel 016 to 014.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like it to only address the property of 700 North Market Street, which I believe is 016.
Okay.
And the reason for that is because that looks to be the only property that's actually encroaching into the right-of-way. And again, it's a prime thoroughfare, and we don't want to lose that space. The other question I had about that was I noticed in the original application, the Public Works comments were that it potentially could have been handled with a utility, that we may need to maintain a utility easement. That was either from the comments you all provided or from the applicant. And this doesn't mention a utility easement remaining on that space. Oh, it's my Darth Vader moment. Can you speak to that? Do we need to preserve a utility easement?
Yes, ma'am. So there's a natural gas main that runs through there and an active cable service with electrical and communications facilities. So a utility easement would be best that's on there, but I don't know that there's an actual requirement because it's so small. As long as it stays copied on the plat and all that stuff, then I don't think there's an issue.
Okay, so Mr. Attorney, do you have any recommendations for me on that?
I think if it's got an easement on the land, we probably should at least reference where that easement is.
So well, right now, it's a public right-of-way.
Right.
So it's not, there's not an easement, but there are utilities going through it. And so...
Yeah, if we abandon the easement, we would not have...
We abandon the right-of-way, so what I'm wondering is do we need to add a utility easement for that six feet that we...
So you can be able to access it for the future.
Yes.
Okay.
Because arguably, it wouldn't be our property at that point in time.
Absolutely.
So whose team takes lead on producing that documentation?
As long as we can get a description, we can do it easy.
Okay, so what we'll want to do, Phil, is cut it just to behind Parcel 016?
Yes.
And add the utility easement to that right-of-way abandonment. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel, for that time. Thank you, Jay, for your help.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, that brings us to resolutions for next week. Please hit your light if you have any questions or need any assistance from anyone. We will be confirming Mayor Kelly's appointment of Terry Knowles as fire chief next week. Okay, seeing no lights. Let's take a look at future considerations. Councilwoman Clark, uh, Councilman Elliott.
Yes, this may be a Sharita question, and I'm sorry that I did not get this to you sooner or somebody else. This is about Item A on economic development. And I got this question recently from a resident. I see we're moving these funds to the IDB for economic development purposes. Can you explain to us a little bit and kind of refresh us our memories of as to what does the IDB use these funds for? Sorry, I put you on the spot. I meant to call you earlier.
Good afternoon, counsel. Sharita Allen, Senior Advisor for Economic and Workforce Development. I am not familiar with that particular line item. Would you be able to provide for me the amount of that?
Yes, it's $588,899.98.
Is it $585,000?
Eighty-eight.
It's the Terminated Chattanooga Opportunity Fund.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So those funds were appropriated to CNE some years ago for small business development. Those funds have been returned to the city, and they are being moved to the Industrial Development Board to facilitate small business programs. And so the Industrial Development Board, there are two in Hamilton County. There's a Hamilton County Industrial Development Board, and there's a City of Chattanooga Industrial Development Board. Small business programs are historically operated through the Industrial Development Board. Those are programs that are typically created at the city council, the mayor and the city council level, and they're sent over to the IDB for implementation. So these funds will go back over to the IDB and be used for future small business development programs.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I put you on the spot.
Not a problem.
The pro, she's got the answers. Councilman Clark.
I'm sorry, Sharita. This is for you as well. My apologies.
Come on, come on.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hill. I want to get some additional context on how we came... What was the process in determining to terminate the Chattanooga Opportunity Fund? For those of us who are not on council, was that an agreement that we severed? And if so, for what purpose? And my second follow-up question is if it's being moved to the Industrial Development Board, which I'm familiar with what they do, it says for the purpose of economic development. Can you explain a little bit more about what their economic development purposes are with almost half a million dollars? And does that benefit my district at all?
Terrific. So the first part of the question related to how that program was terminated. Those funds were discovered through an audit that happened at CNE, and CNE notified the city that those funds had not been spent for small business programs. And so as a result, the city said, send those funds back to us. So that's how the funds came back to us. And then on the other piece, on the economic development side, there are certain authorities that are vested to the Industrial Development Board from the state. So the IDB is its own separate entity. There are rules and regulations that are statutes that the IDB must follow related to all of their programs, and they are allowed to use those economic development funds for small business programs. They can use them for market studies. They could use those for acquisition of land. They could use those for remediation of land. So those funds, once they go back to what would be their general fund at the IDB, those funds could be used for any number of programs that they have outlined, but they still have to follow the state statute as far as how those funds are expended and then the process through which those funds can be accessed.
One additional follow-up question. Are they the only board that we can transfer that money to? Why were they selected? Were there some other considerations, other economic development?
They are the only board that the City of Chattanooga utilizes for small business programs. That's why those funds went back there.
I don't know if that answered my question. You were saying something to my ear. Say it again.
Oh, then I will yield to counsel.
Let me rephrase my question. Are we under any type of legal obligation to say this is where we're transferring that money toward to? Do we have to transfer it to the Industrial Development Board?
I will leave that up to counsel.
Okay, if you want me to answer, I'll be glad to answer.
That's counsel.
Yes.
That's counsel.
Oh, I'm sorry. Legal counsel. My apologies. Legal counsel.
S E L, not I L.
Okay, thank you.
In my spare time, I am also the counsel for the...
I was just as confused as you are. I was just as confused.
Okay, it's okay. Thank you.
And so there is statutory authority under the powers and operation of the Industrial Development Board to do certain things for locally-owned businesses and small businesses. That power is the reason that it was transferred, I assume, to that board here in connection with this matter. And that can at least result in that coming to our community and being used in our community whenever a request is made to the IDB. So the Industrial Development Board holds those funds and can be used for anything that is within their authority under state law.
I don't mean to be rude, so please forgive me. I understand their authority as to what they can do with the funds after we transfer it to them. Are you following?
I do, yes.
Okay, so my question is, what is it or who that allows us to only transfer to the Industrial Development Board? Can I transfer it back to CNE? Can I transfer it to a nonprofit that does economic development? What is it that bounds us to transferring it to the Industrial Development Board? Is it a law? Is it a city code? What is it that bounds us to transferring it to the Industrial Development Board, and can we transfer it to any other organizations?
I do not know the answer to that. I will leave that up to legal counsel to respond. Historically, we have sent funds for small business development to the Industrial Development Board using the guidelines that city council has set for small business programs. So there are currently four small business programs that were created by legislation through the city council body. Those legislative items were sent to the IDB for implementation, and the funds from city council are sent over to the IDB for implementation of programs created by legislation from the city council.
Got you. So the city council put into code for us to only transfer those type of dollars to the Industrial Development Board?
For a city, for small business programs, yes. City council has created small business program guidelines through legislation and sent those to the IDB for implementation.
Got you. And in this case, it specifies for the purpose of economic development.
That is correct.
It doesn't say small business development, though.
That's correct.
And what you're asking us to consider.
That is correct. And so when we say economic development, it is going back to the Economic Development Fund that sits at the IDB, and that fund is what's used to fund small business programs.
All right, thank you so much, Sharita.
Perfect, thank you.
Are you sure? We're done? I don't have any more lights. Okay, now who wants to talk to Sharita? Just kidding. Okay, counsel, do we have any other questions on future considerations? Councilwoman Burrs.
Yeah, I apologize. I have a backtrack question, so I can wait till after you get through the rest of the agenda.
I think that this was our last part.
Was it?
Yeah, let's backtrack. Where do you want to go?
Yeah, so I want to go back. In this question, Phil, we talked briefly about the matter on Tremont Street and Manning Street, and I think about the abandonment. Was there any follow-up from that?
Yeah, it's finished at this point in time.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. I just wanted, I just had it on my notes to make sure I'd brought closure to that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, counsel, that clears up all of our agenda items review for today. We do have a Parks and Public Works Committee meeting, so I will turn the chair over to Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hill, and I'll call this meeting of the Parks and Public Works Committee to order. Counsel, can I get a motion on the minutes from our previous meeting?
Some more.
Okay, minutes will stand as previously published. We'll get right into it today. I know we have a large audience, and I appreciate you all being here. I know that's why you're here today for our committee meeting, so we do appreciate that. We have Jeremy Wood first up today, our administrator of Public Works. He's going to present to us about our current city paving list, and we'll open up for questions once he's done with that. And then the second part of our meeting will be for April 1st to give us a presentation on parks and outdoors.
Councilwoman Davis, members of council, I'd like to introduce Greg Harold. He's my engineer manager for transportation. He will be giving this presentation today, and I'm here for a little bit of backup because he's my SME.
Okay, so Department of Public Works, oh, we okay here. Let's see. We got Citywide Services. I think we're all aware that there are five major divisions and subdivisions of Public Works. Citywide Services, Engineering, Fleet, Land Disturbing Office, Solid Waste, and Landfill. And each division plays a critical role in the past and future infrastructure of the city, and each person is dedicated to making the city better every day, to build one team, building one Chattanooga. Pavement Condition Index, PCI, this is how we rate our roadways. And I think you've probably been informed about this before, but we have the pavement condition index. It ranges from zero to 100, and of those, we have it broken down into three different groups. 60 to 100 are considered for lifespan extension. Those are roads that are in good condition. They're newly paved. They're reasonable. They do have a reasonable budget impact, but it's not a high impact on the budget. So what we look at in those circumstances to preserve those roads is pavement preservation techniques. I think you may be aware that we've been doing pavement rejuvenation for the last five years. We've been spending $300,000 over the last five years, that's $1.5 million in order to rejuvenate the asphalt, but we can only do that on roadways that are freshly paved. They need to be paved within the last three years. And really, I'm sure everyone has seen the new commercials of the roofs that they are now doing a similar thing to where they're spraying the roofs to rejuvenate them and keep the volatile chemicals in them. That is what preserves the pavement or the bituminants inside the asphalt. So that is what this does, is it keeps them fresh and keeps the pavement flexible. So that is what this does, is it keeps them fresh and keeps the pavement flexible. That lack of cracking preserves the life of the pavement. Uh, we only have five years of data on that, so that is still, we're trying to see how much bang for your buck you do get out of it. But it is an effort to try to stem our issue of not being able to fully fund our paving. Uh, as as you're aware, we have a tremendous amount of roads that need to be repaved. There's no way we're getting there without implementing new methods to preserve our pavements. Uh, the next category is 40 to 60. Those are the best candidates for those are the ones that we get the most complaints on, of course. Uh, we have just some spot repair, but it's mainly a mill and a resurfacing of the roadway that would be done. Those are the ones that have the most impact on the community. People see those. They realize that we've actually done something. So those are the candidates that we consider the most in our list. Uh, and then the below 40, those are the complaint areas that everyone knows about, the failing roads, the roads where it is, uh, it but it requires us going in and fully rebuilding the roadway. It is not just a mill or put extra pavement on. It is dig the road entirely up, replace the base material, and then put a new road on top. Those are extremely costly to the tune of $875,000 per lane mile. So a significant amount, which we'll get to that a little bit later with the cost per lane mile for paving. But, uh, it is a significant cost. Uh, the things that come into the consideration of the scoring is the pavement distress, cracks, potholes, rutting, surface wear, and base failure. Uh, so you can act, you'll see those on the roadway yourself, and you'll notice that there is an issue with that particular road. Uh, but also the severity of the distress and how it's stretching. Is it a, uh, is it a sewer trench settlement? These are the sorts of issues that we look at when trying to decide whether or not a road needs to be bumped up the list or where it falls on the PCI. It may have been getting more, uh, more traffic than it previously was because there's new development that has gone on, uh, out past this, uh, out in the county. Maybe they're coming in through this area now where they previously weren't. That affects the pavement condition as well. Uh, so that's the traffic load, uh, that we consider, the ADT, which is average daily traffic, and the vehicle utilization, what type of vehicles are used in these roads? So are is it major trucks? Uh, because that, of course, affects our pavement section. So all of these things, not every roadway is the same. Everyone knows that. But it's, uh, when they're put in, a lot of roads were put in the same. They were put in just as subdivision roads. And now they are experiencing heavy truck traffic. So some of them are not, uh, holding up to the level that they were expected because the traffic that is on those roads is different than what was anticipated originally during the life of that roadway. Uh, and then, of course, climate, what we mean by climate is where does that fall? Does it get inundated? Does it get flooded often? That truly affects a roadway's base because when a roadway gets wet, dry, wet, dry, it's going to continually settle. So that's what we mean when we say climate. It is not understand the climate of Chattanooga. It's not what we're referring to. It's really, uh, the inundation, the water on the roadway, and can we get that water off the road? So that that is kind of a breakdown, brief overview of the PCI index. But that takes us into what other considerations we do when making that list. Utility conflicts. How many utilities do we have in conflict? Private developments, whether or not we have new private developments coming online soon. Do we need to hold off on repaving this road because a subdivision's about to come in, uh, bringing in tons of construction traffic, which would, uh, potentially damage our new roadway? Do we put that one off until that development wraps up so that then we can put a nice fresh, uh, fresh topping on it when, once everyone has moved in would be the goal. Uh, so sewer trench repair, whether or not you you have sewer trench settlement in that particular neighborhood, because that is a separate issue that we have to remediate prior to repaving. Um, the the land surrounding land uses that there again, this speaks to the vehicles that are going to utilize the road, whether or not it's a bus route, uh, and also council requests. Uh, so when we get these, of course, these are weighed and measured by each council person. You guys discuss, and then you bring it to us. And of course, we will also give you our opinion on that particular segment of roadway. But what you decide is what we ultimately do at the end of the day. Traffic counts, of course, special events, whether or not we know of any particular special events that are going to be coming up. Uh, an example might be Iron Man or something of that nature, where we have done repaving ahead of, uh, events such as this, and when we knew we had failing roads, but to keep some of these big special events coming to Chattanooga, we we have done that. So, uh, whether or not there's any need for traffic calming in the area, speed tables, all of these ADA accommodations, these add complexity and cost to ADA accommodations. So a lot of times, if there are a tremendous amount of ADA upgrades needed, anytime we do a new construction project at this point of a repave, we are required to upgrade all of the handicap ramps, the ADA ramps to current standard. Uh, if they do not have truncated dome warning mats, we have to add those. Those are the little dots that you see. Uh, all of those items have to be added if we do a project. Uh, that being said, that makes that road segment a little tougher to, uh, to swallow when you look at the actual cost per lane mile. Uh, and just to kind of to get into some of that lane mile, and I know that's a lot to read, and you probably want to read it, you probably read it later, but just to do a comparison cost to rebuild a road. Uh, we we've had a contractor estimate of a particular road segment, which was Hickory Valley Road. Uh, we were able to use city, uh, citywide forces to pave that. That particular one, we chose it because it did not have a lot of ADA upgrades, did not have a lot of manholes that had to be lowered or raised. It was a very straightforward segment of road. Uh, but because of that, we were able to save $200,000 by using city forces to do that. That that's a savings of $47,000 a lane mile. Uh, now, that also comes, but we had to take crews away from from what they would normally do. So that is something to keep in mind, that this does tie up a cruise time, uh, when we do these things. Uh, but it it did equate to a savings for the city. And now, uh, of course, as you know, we do need contractors, uh, to, uh, to help us achieve our goal. But if the city forces could in fact help hit some of these, uh, some of the low hanging fruit, so to speak, it would be to our benefit is something to at least consider. Uh, because really what we have to do is keep these roads out of that zero to 40 range. That is the ultimate goal here, is to keep these roads from getting in those failing conditions, because it's at a point where we can't, it just costs too much to repair. Uh, it's hard to swallow. Uh, capital fund changes, just a kind of resurfacing program, the last, uh, since FY22, we have received $10 million in paving, uh, for the paving budget. And FY25, we were able to finish six, uh, just over 60 lane miles. Now, just to recap, a lane mile is 12 foot wide, one mile long. So it is a, so you're you're correct in thinking that we have to make an assumption that it's a 12 foot lane. Some lanes, of course, 10 feet, some are 11. A 12 foot is what we base that dimension on. So for lane miles, uh, the in 2020, uh, 2021, the cost per lane mile, we were paying $148,000 per lane mile to do that. And with, uh, inflation and other, uh, markets that affect bituminous index that affects the markets, uh, in 2024, we were paying upwards of $220,000 per lane mile. Uh, but just as a contrast, we, as a contrast, though, uh, the new prices for FY26 have actually gone back down, which is kind of counterintuitive. They're now at $188,000 per lane mile. And that's really due to the bituminous index, which is the, uh, emulsion that you're putting in the asphalt. The, uh, it's a petroleum based emulsion. And because of that, the price of of oil, crude oil, going up and down definitely affects that. Uh, we we spend, so we have to pay an index price if we do, of course, if that index goes up above a certain level. But if it goes down below, uh, a certain level, we get a refund from the contractor. Uh, last year alone, we got $150,000 refund for due to the bituminous index. But that is, that is one thing that's always considered when we're looking into these paving projects. Uh, rebuilds have been overlooked for a number of years. Uh, in 2025, we set aside, we programmed $2 million of our paving money for rebuilds because of those failing roadways, the zero to 40 roadways. Uh, that 2 million was then matched with another budget amendment of $2 million last year in FY25. So now, the rebuild cost, though, is roughly $825,000 a lane mile. So we're not getting very far with that money. So trying to to find new ways, innovative ways to do this, use citywide, uh, forces to to help with some of the rebuild costs is one of our our goals for the future. Uh, the resurfacing program in 2026, we got $6 million. Uh, and so with that $6 million, we're expecting to be able to complete 32 lane miles in FY26. Uh, but luckily for us, that price, that fluctuating price did go down this year, so we were able to at least get 32 miles out of it, but not the 60 that we got last year. So, uh, the rebuild program, uh, has not been fully funded, so it was using capital projects. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. That's your error. Okay. Uh, rebuild cost is roughly, uh, 250,000 per lane mile if we, uh, if we do that through citywide services, using city forces to do this work. And sewer trench settlement, we have a new, a newly created funding source. I'm not sure if it was newly created, but we were able to tap into it now. It's $3 million that, uh, we're going to be able to fund sewer trench settlements. So that will also help us in our efforts to remove some of these sewer trench settlements.
One, one big thing I want to point out here is that 825,000 per lane mile for the rebuild program, that's to have contractors do it?
Yes.
If we do it, it's at the 250,000 lane mile.
And that, just so you know, just to give everybody a kind of a road to think about, Lower Mill Road is probably the best example. It's the road I hear about the most, uh, that is in the worst condition. That, if you want to think about what a zero to 40 roadway looks like, Lower Mill is that sort of road, just to give you an example. So completed work, uh, FY21 through FY25 completed, we've completed over 200 lane miles. Uh, this is showing an overlay of the the districts that we have in fact worked in. And so you can also see that the areas that are planned, uh, as in yellow, and the green is what has been completed. And there's a GIS dashboard if you're ever interested in looking more closely into each particular road. But this is the breakdown per district. Uh, the way ahead, trying, increasing our paving crews, uh, citywide services is a is a goal, uh, they increasing their competence in doing paving projects. Uh, our crews, like I said, had to be pulled from other crews. They're not, this is not their everyday job necessarily. So training those employees to do the specific, uh, of a paving program is something that we have to continually work on as we have turnover. Uh, but that is what we're definitely pushing towards because it did save us $48,000 per lane mile on just this small segment of road that, uh, we tested to see how well where it would fall. Uh, sewer trench settlements have been prioritized due to the, uh, alternative budget for this work. And pavement preservation techniques and products, uh, are designed to restore and extend the asphalt, uh, pavement's life. We have been implementing those at three, about $300,000 a year for the last five years. So we'll continue to do that. And as we get more information, more data to show what kind of bang for our buck, we that will may become its own fund, currently is funded out of the paving budget. Uh, and then also full rebuilds of the substrate, which also includes milling and paving. That's just a a good note that when you see a full rebuild, that means it the full base gets rebuilt as well as the mill and pave. So you're not able, that's why that number is so high when you look at a roadway rebuild number. Um, and then the introduction of AI and machine learning is really, uh, looking to help us in a lot of ways. Uh, cameras, LiDAR, uh, detection systems that we can attach to, uh, city vehicles potentially. We're working on a contract currently, uh, to attach it to garbage truck, to attach a sensor to garbage trucks, which will allow us to get a snapshot of the entire city. Uh, as garbage trucks run all of the routes in the city, it's the perfect vehicle to utilize. Uh, and so we are working, uh, right now, it's illegal for review, but working with a company to, uh, to try to, uh, do a new pavement index that will not only inform our pavement index, because we we do want it, we've done one in 2000, uh, so the numbers, the PCIs that you see, that we did one in 2000, we did another in 2010 and another in 2020. So this would be at the five year mark, which we normally have been doing on a 10 year cycle. Uh, this will allow us to know where our PCI is and what, how it's trending. It will also, uh, help us identify, uh, specific failures, potholes, things of that nature, so we can be more proactive and less reactionary to those, uh, items. Uh, let's see. And any questions? I'm sorry I rambled on.
Okay. All right. Looks like I have Councilman Elliott.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Jay, I have one question. Uh, thank you for your, for your thorough presentation. Um, Jay, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm gonna open up Kenworth's Wilcox. It's not on the list.
Wilcox is on the 25 list. So we're still paying for the Wilcox, uh, update from the 25 list.
The Wilcox is supposed to be repaved, scratched up and repaved.
Yes.
Is that getting paved this year?
Yes.
Was it what list did I just see?
That's the FY26 list. The Wilcox is something that we we tried to do during the, uh, fall last year. And it caused issues because the temperatures dropped too low. So instead of us redoing it, we're going to task that out to Tally. And they're going to have them do it. Yes.
It will be on the paving list. Yes, sir.
Y'all, y'all good with me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Next, we have Councilwoman Burz.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, for either one of you, I, I, you answered one of my questions because I wanted to know what this list represented. Could you all email us again the list that's ongoing right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Of current projects, because I didn't see District 6 on this list for 26 at all. So I just want to see what's still in the works.
Yes, ma'am.
Living up to the end of 25. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I, let me, I have a follow up question. Sorry. What what determines this list? Is it just scheduling based on requests?
And we start out with the PCI. And then we evaluate each roadway and see how many we can fit into a particular budget. When, uh, we planned for FY26, we had planned for $10 million, but when we were told we would be receiving six, we honed that list back in, trying to get the most, uh, keeping groupings of roads. So that's another thing we try to do to to keep the contractor from jumping all over the place with these roads. We try to group them based on the PCI as well as, uh, physical location.
Okay, thank you. I'm I'm done, Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. We have Councilman Henderson.
Mr. Chair, Jeremy, go back two slides. And I think, I think this has been everybody's question, and I'm, maybe I'm still not understanding the answer. And I'm just going to take District 1, uh, for example. Uh, we've completed 20 lane miles, correct?
Yes, sir.
That was from 21 to 25?
Yes, sir.
So FY26, it says planned, we've got 14 lane miles, correct? Plan prediction?
So that actual, the FY26 is actually the extension. What I meant to put up there was FY26 to 27, because that's what we're projected out. That includes all of those. So those aren't going to just show up on the 26 list. It's going to include the future list as well.
So that's the difference between this slide and the next slide, because the next slide just shows.
Yes, sir. The next slide is just the 26 list.
Which is this coming year.
Yes, sir.
So help me explain, flip, flip to that next screen there. District 1 has one, one project, we're getting a third of a lane mile. And I noticed District 2 had one project, they're getting a half a mile.
Yes, sir.
How do we explain to our district how we got left out of the 26?
So a lot of this list is based on the actual condition of the roads and where they're the worst. And we're trying to attack those right now. So there are other districts that have a lot worse infrastructure than District 1 and 2. So we're trying to prioritize those to get everything up so that we can standardize across the city.
So we can expect in 27 then to see some more roads in District 1?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay.
Next up, we have Chairwoman Hill.
Thank you. Um, I, thanks for asking that question. Um, I think District 3's had a hard time of it as well with with this.
Well, I, I guess I meant District 3 had one.
Yeah, District 3's really been, uh, yeah.
Next up, we have Chairwoman Hill.
Thank you. I, thanks for asking that question. I think District 3's had a hard time of it as well with, with this. Yeah, District 3's really been, yeah. I know we've been building a bridge over there. Falling off the side of the road. I have a question about lane miles. I want to make sure that I understand that. There's a, there's a road in my district that folks have been asking about for about five years. And the unfortunate thing is that it's called Brenwood. And the unfortunate thing is that in the time they've been asking for it, the PCI score has gone down. So it's gone from a pave it to now it's a rebuild. So now it's like you're even further down the list because it's a rebuild, right? And I'm pleased though that in the time that Jay and I have been emailing, it sounds like the price potentially has gone down because of the, the work of bringing things internally. So in a, in a neighborhood street, not a official two-lane road, but a, a standard neighborhood street, which can't have two vehicles. Do I, how, how do, is that one lane in one direction and one lane in another direction? So if I have a one-mile neighborhood road, is that considered two lane miles?
No, it's been, so just to, if you think about, if you had a 12-foot wide road, that, that is one lane mile. One mile of 12-foot wide is one lane mile.
Okay, so a, a larger neighborhood, what is our subdivision street requirement?
20, 24 to 26. It depends, it depends on the weather.
So in fact, a neighborhood road, one mile is two lane miles.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. That's correct.
All right, that's helpful to understand. Because when Jay and I were emailing back and forth about it, it was about a million dollars a lane mile to rebuild. And this is a pretty long road. But to get to 250K internally is encouraging. It says to me that by doing, focusing on bringing this expertise in, that we're going to be able to get more out of, out of the budget that has been allocated for this year. I think it's also really interesting, just the fluctuation of the cost of the materials themselves. And aren't we so fortunate that we have one thing to smile about in the 188 versus, per lane mile versus 220K last year? So thanks for this. I think that was my main question. Well, I will add, I think this, this little graphic, I got a little peek at it and I know that it's useful to be able to, to play with. And when this is ready for the public, I'd love to be able to share it with my district.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think it would be really helpful. I, I like the way that in that it starts to add up, like here's how many total we've, we've done. So that people can see a fuller picture. Because one year to another year, I mean, to Councilman Henderson's point, you know, one, one measly project in District 1, you haven't even voted the wrong way yet, sir. Uh, just wait. But I think even to have a, a, a longer horizon could be useful to people to know. But I, but I also understand there are some risks with that because things change, right? Then a flood happens and, and the priorities change. So but like a three to five-year paving plan would be, I think, useful for the public to be able to see at any given time.
So I'm actually working on district plans right now. And we're trying to get a, a collective measure of projects, roadways, buildings, different things of that sort, infrastructure projects collectively. So I can say, hey, District 1, this is everything we're going to be doing for you. This is how much it's going to cost. This is how long it's going to take.
Okay.
And that's part of my long-term strategic plan for everybody.
I think that would be really useful. Thank you, Jay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman. That's all.
Okay. Councilman Elliott, you're recognized.
Yes, really quickly, thank you, Chairman. Can I get a list of all of the PCI scores for my district?
We can get you a list of the ones that we have.
Yes.
I don't know that all of them would be current.
Okay.
But as soon as we get that AI piece that was up there, we're going to redo the entire city.
Okay.
So we, we can give you what we have right now and then we'll go from there.
Which is based on 2020. Just so you know, the latest information is 2020. So we'll, but we, yes, we can get that for your district.
How often are you guys, if you said that, excuse me?
No, it's okay. It's, it's every 10 years. Currently was what, it was being funded every 10 years to do the PCI update. Our goal is to get real-time, or near-real-time updates by using the AI tools. This will allow every day when a garbage truck goes in, once they come back and download the information, that will then go into our system and the PCI will be adjusted. If there are any major changes, it will flag those to tell it. So we'll know if there's been a major change to send someone out to verify that that's not just a glitch or something of that nature.
Have we been doing this in-house or do we contract it?
We contract it. Yeah, contracted out.
All right.
And then one, one more thing about that AI is the software that it brings associated with it will actually give us a cost estimate associated with the rise and fall of the costs in the systems. So we would know, hey, to do this road approximately $10,000 or whatever it would be right then on the spot as soon as we download the software. So I think that would, that, that enables us to move a lot quicker as we're going through. And the AI also penetrates the surface to look at the subsurface to make sure the base is still viable.
One, one question. How accurate is this software?
Everything that we've seen so far that I've been looking at, this is the most accurate because it's done with LiDAR radars. So it is giving everything. And it's, it's a real-time assessment with a real-time fluctuation in costs as well.
Okay.
And to your point though, we, we are looking at other sensor options because that is the big question, the accuracy. So we actually have met with some pilot programs that are looking to, and we're going to compare them to the known product to see if we can get a better product for, for less money in the future, utilizing photogrammetry, radar and LiDAR, as he said, to, to blend of those to see if we can get the best product.
Thank you, sir. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Councilwoman Burz.
I think Chairman Henderson and, and, I mean, Councilman Henderson, sorry, and Chairwoman Hill kind of tacked on to, said what I was gonna ask about that list. Because I think, I know your projects don't run just on an annual basis. It's probably a two to three year. And if we, if we just share the list that's here, it does look a little wopsided. There are no projects listed on 6, for District 6, even though I know you all have done quite a few projects so far this year. And maybe you're saving it for a bridge. I don't know. That might be, might be an option too.
That is definitely in the works.
Which my district would probably trade off paving for a bridge. But I'll just throw that in there. If we could get like a two to three-year project plan projection, I think, as Chairwoman Hill suggested, I think that would be more desirable to show our districts to know that there's things happening. And I understand wanting to concentrate on a certain area for, for cost savings. So thank you, that would be great.
Yeah, we're looking at a five-year strategic plan for every district right now.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful to communicate to our districts.
Yes, ma'am. And then keep in mind too, that list doesn't show the sewer settlements or any of that stuff. And those are things that change the PCI as we move along. So if we fix a sewer settlement, that could upgrade the number on that road and bring it into a resurface or not have to do anything on it.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you all for all your work. I know you've been working hard. Thanks.
Yeah, Councilman Clark.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Quick question for you. If, if there's a street that does not have a current PCI index, can we request that?
Yes.
Um, I'd like, I think I may have sent something to constituent services about this in regards to NIMITs?
Yes.
22?
We're tracking that already.
Okay, so when can I get a PCI score?
I'm just waiting on the feedback from Eddie Tate, whenever he gets it done.
Gotcha. My follow-up question to that is, um, this is kind of piggybacking on some of the things that they've talked about regarding the proportionality of whose district has this and who district has that. Would it be safe to assume that if you have less streets on the list with a lower PCI score, that you have good roads in your district? Is that an assumption?
That would be a fair assumption. That would be a fair assumption. That it's, because we are showing, we are trying to do the worst. Now, there are going to be some that 0 to 40 that would be in the rebuild list that would not appear. We're looking at those candidates between 40 and, and 70 really, 40 and 60 in that range. Those are the best candidates for the resurfacing contract. But yes, to your point, that is a very.
That's a fair assumption.
It's a fair assumption, yes.
And I guess my question would be if that, if the, the opinion of people who don't see roads on the list, could they request, like just like I did with NIMITs? I mean, and I, I guess what I'm getting at is that in the evaluation process, if there seems to be this notion of disproportionality, which I don't, I don't really care. I mean, I hope my district is off of this list and then you go pave away and Marvin's district have it. And so, anyway. And so, but again, the assumption is that if your district is not represented en masse, that you have good roads in your districts and that there are some other priorities in others. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then keep in mind too, one last thing. As we produced that list, the prices were much higher. So now the prices have gone down. That might change how we, how we can add different things to the list. So it's going to be a fluctuation in, in fluid continuously.
I think y'all all have keyed on this and Jay said, we will update our slide. It said FY26. That should say FY26 and 27. But that was the, assuming 60 lane miles per year. So when you look at this, the next slide, that is only 32 lane miles because we only got $6 million. That's, that's the discrepancy that you're seeing.
Got you.
So, but you'll, you'll note that when you look at it closer.
Thank you.
And we have Vice Chairwoman Noel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So is it a fair assumption? I'm going to piggyback on, I'm going, I'm going to piggyback on you that if you only have one road, then you have previously years have gotten all the roads that you need taken care of? The majority of them.
I really can't speak to the past of that, Councilwoman. I can only talk for what we're doing right now. I don't know if that would equate to that or not, honestly. My priority is coming in and attacking the roads that are worst. I'm not specifically looking at districts in, in any way, shape or form other than whenever I'm reporting it to everybody else. I would say that the road system in this city have been neglected for a while and we owe you a lot of hard work on those roads.
So is, is it, is it a fair assumption to say that in certain areas, the roads have been neglected longer?
Yes, ma'am. I would say, I believe so.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you know other lights? Are there any other questions for the public works portion of the program today? All right. Well, thank you all very much for the presentation and for the work that you do.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And we'll have April 1st come up now and pivot to Parks and Outdoors.
Good afternoon, Council. I also have a helper, Brian. He not only is helping me with the slides, but he created the slides. Not that I cannot do PowerPoint, but he does them better. So I'm going to let him do that. I am April 1st. I am the administrator of Parks and Outdoors for the City of Chattanooga. The theme of this year's efforts is next level moves and it's a theme we're embracing as a team and a clear vision. In the coming 12 months, we will be making impactful strides across our community, building on our strengths and tackling new challenges head-on. This is about incremental improvements on a bold strategic actions that were set forth before me and, and, but in a strategic achievable way to elevate our city and enrich the lives of every person who calls it home. Let's look forward to, together to a year of significant progress and positive change. As you can see, our mission is we are community builders, connecting all Chattanooga residents and guests to the benefits of our parks, recreation, nature, adventure, history, culture and arts. Our responsibility are to the people, the community and the natural resources of Chattanooga. Now, none of this, none of these next level moves would be possible without the incredible talented and dedicated team of Parks and Outdoor. I am constantly impressed by the awesome, talented and truly dedicated individuals who serve Parks and Outdoor every single day. They are the engine behind the progress and their commitment is what transforms ambitious plans into tangible realities. And this leads me to another crucial next move for the upcoming year, strengthening our collaborative power. I believe there are significant efficiencies to be gained and even more innovative ideas to be built when we consciously and consistently come together to brainstorm. Our collective expertise, diverse perspectives and shared commitments are our greatest assets. By actively fostering environments for this kind of collaborative thinking, we can unlock new solutions, streamline our processes and ultimately serve our community even more effectively. We're not just asking to make next level moves. We are creating the space and support for us to make them together. We like to say, we build together, we play together. And I love that. Now, I know you've heard about some exciting initiatives and you might be anticipating grand announcements for new parks and expanded facilities. And while those aspirations are certainly part of our long-term vision, our next level move here isn't what some of you might call sexy. It is the absolute foundation of our success. Before we can effectively focus on building more parks or adding new assets, we must ensure our current assets are in working order with a robust and successful maintenance plan. This means caring for the infrastructure we already have, our parks, our public buildings, our existing greenway spaces and every piece of equipment that keeps our city running smoothly. It's about proactive maintenance, not over, not overreactive repairs, extending the lifespan of our investments and ensuring they continue to serve our community reliably and efficiently. This commitment to foundational excellence might not always make headlines, but it's the smart, responsible and ultimately most impactful approach. It is how we build a truly sustainable future, one where every dollar is maximized and our residents benefit from a well-maintained, dependable public resource. This is how we set ourselves up for continued success, making sure our house is in perfect order before we start adding on rooms. You've heard, and I just spoke about several exciting initiatives today. Many of these, particularly the larger transformative projects, were already in conception long before I stepped into this role. And they are undeniably important for, I talk with my hands, so I'm hitting things. They are undeniably important for our city's future. However, these grand visions, the kind that require extensive master plans and significant funding, demand a strategic, disciplined approach. Our next level move is to tackle these critical projects in a systematic way. We need to prioritize them, focus on collective energy on one or two major initiatives at a time and ensuring they receive the attention and resources necessary for successful execution. Once those are well underway or completed, we can strategically move on to the next. Right now, frankly, we have too many irons on the fire. While enthusiasm is vital, spreading ourselves too thin risks delaying everything and completing nothing well. By focusing our efforts, we can achieve tangible progress, build momentum and deliver real results to our community. This focus approach isn't about slowing down. It's actually about building faster and more effectively. And today, that project is the family multi-mobile facility that everyone knows and loves as the skate park. But really, it's a hockey arena, a dog park and a skate park. Building on that foundation of sound asset management, our next level move takes us to an area where our city already punches significantly above its weight, our growing sports economy. It's truly remarkable what we've accomplished. Greta and her team, along with so many others who contributed their vision and tireless efforts have helped build an outsized, incredibly successful softball slash baseball tennis economy. This isn't just about recreation. It's about significant economic impact, bringing in visitors, supporting local businesses and fostering community pride. Now, the challenge and our exciting new move is to not only maintain that impressive success, but to strategically build two more sports to that same capacity. I'm going to task Greta and her team, and she might be hearing it for the first time now. No, I'm just kidding. She's not. I'm going to task Greta and her team, working with relevant departments and community stakeholders to lead this charge. My initial thought and what seems to align with current trends and local interest is that those two sports could be soccer and basketball. Both have passionate, growing fan bases and strong participation in youth and amateur levels. However, this is where that collaborative spirit comes in. Before we commit resources, we need to conduct thorough research, engage with the community and gather input to ensure soccer and basketball are the right next level moves here. and gather input to ensure soccer and basketball are the right next level moves here. That the community wants to embrace and move forward with. This isn't just about what we think is best, it's about what we know the community will Speaking of outsized success, let's talk about Gail and her phenomenal team at Outdoor Chattanooga. The programming they deliver here is frankly also outsized for the city of our size. They do amazing work connecting our community with incredible natural resources we're so fortunate to have. From kayaking to climbing, hiking to biking, they facilitate experiences that enrich lives and showcase the beauty of the region. Yet even with all their success, there's still so much opportunity here. Gail and her team are currently hard at work on following their robust strategic plan, and they've already successfully completed a vital step with their upcoming rebranding. So, upcoming like in the next two weeks, so I say that's done. Their next level moves are clearly defined. They focus on launching a new, more user-friendly website to enhance accessibility and engagement, and an exciting project that many in our active community have been eager for, building a new pump track. These initiatives will further elevate Outdoor Chattanooga's impact, make it even easier for residents and visitors alike to enjoy our city's outdoor offerings. Their continued growth is a testament to their dedication and collective commitment to fostering a vibrant, active community. Beyond the direct programming of Outdoor Chattanooga, another vital move for our Parks and Outdoor Department is a sharpened focus on our arts and creative culture, economy, and special events. This is an area where Chattanooga truly shines, and we recognize its immense value, not just for the quality of life, but as a significant economic driver. For this coming year, Monica and Carmen, their move, including developing a comprehensive three-year work plan to strategically grow this sector. This plan will be supported by an enhanced event management strategy, ensuring that every festival, concert, and public art installation is executed flawlessly, drawing in more visitors, and providing richer experiences for our residents. Crucially, we'll also be making targeted investments in our arts and culture infrastructure, whether that means improving existing venues, creating new public art spaces, or supporting organizations that are the lifeblood of our creative scene. And recognizing that talent is paramount, there will be a strong emphasis on workforce development within the arts and culture sector, ensuring our local artists and creative professionals have the resources and opportunities to thrive. This holistic approach will cement Chattanooga's reputation as a vibrant culture hub and destination These are indeed next level moves, and they are ambitious. And ambitious plans, as we all know, require significant resources. We have a lot of big plans, and those big plans require money. Therefore, a critical focus for this year will be proactively explore diverse revenue sources to help fund these initiatives. We cannot rely solely on traditional methods. This means diligently looking to what other forward-thinking cities are doing, examining innovative funding models, successful public-private partnerships, and creative solutions that have worked elsewhere. We'll be studying their successes and adapting them to fit Chattanooga's unique strength and needs. Furthermore, we will actively leverage our incredibly generous giving community, both in innovative and traditional ways. Chattanooga has a strong giving spirit, and we will work to harness that to support these vital projects. This means engaging with foundations, local businesses, and individual donors to clearly articulate the vision and demonstrate the tangible impacts their contributions will have on our city's future. From grand capital campaigns to grassroots fundraising efforts, we will explore every avenue to ensure our big plans have the financial backing they deserve. This isn't just about securing funds, it's about building a shared investment in Chattanooga. And finally, our next level move culminate, I wrote the word and now I can't say it, culminate in powerful overarching framework that touches every aspect of our work. We need to champion Chattanooga's National Park City designation. Our community is incredibly proud of our identity as a city and a park, and this designation isn't just a title, it's a testament to our unique culture, natural setting, and our commitment to green spaces, outdoor recreation, and environmental stewardship. It's a lens through which we need to view everything from. In the coming year, we will advance our National Park City status through robust marketing and strategic planning. This means not only promoting this incredible asset to the world, but also integrating its principles into our urban development, our conversation efforts, conservation efforts, and our community programs. We will boost community engagement around the designation, ensuring every resident understands and feels part of this unique identity, inspiring a shared responsibility for our natural environment. A crucial component of this will be to overhaul our volunteer program so that we're truly utilizing them efficiently. Our volunteers are an invaluable asset, and by streamlining the process provides clearer roles and offering more impactful opportunities, we can empower them to be even more effective champions of the parks and green spaces. National Park City is the guiding principle for our next level moves. It's not just a designation, it's our philosophy. Informing how we plan our growth, protect our environment, and enhance the quality of life for everyone in Chattanooga, it's the unifying vision that will drive us forward for the next 12 months and beyond. So thank you for bringing me here to be part of this great team, and I don't just mean up at this podium, I mean across the country, and this amazing outdoor system you have built. And a big thank you to Brian for helping me put together this presentation.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for April? Okay, we have Chairwoman Hill.
Thank you. April, thank you for this presentation. I wondered if you could tell us about the role of the Outdoor Council, the Parks Council, where everybody has somebody appointed, and how they're engaging with the Parks and Outdoors Department?
I actually can't answer that question yet because I haven't met with them.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, look forward to hearing about that. You know, when Mayor Kelly created that, there was just tremendous enthusiasm and a lot of vision and excitement around the implementation of the Parks and Outdoors Plan, and so I know you've got tremendous resources in those folks.
I think that they have been off for the last two months, but I believe they're on my schedule for next week.
Great, okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for April? Councilman Elliott.
Hey, April, thank you so much. It was a great presentation, and I really appreciate your candor when you acknowledged, like, hey, we got irons on too many fires. One question I did have, particularly around your maintenance for our current parks, what is that funding at, as it stands right now, that you guys need in order to keep up with the maintenance you need, make the necessary improvements before we can shift to this expansion mindset?
So during the roads presentation, it resonated in that way. It's large. I think that they have a consultant number, but I'm still trying to finalize that with specific deferred maintenance needs. So I don't want to give you that really large number because it's very large, and I want to make sure that it's backed with actual items that need to be done.
Yeah, so whenever you do get it, if you could...
But there is a large deferred maintenance list.
Yeah, and I understand. But yeah, whenever you do get it, if you could pass my, pass along. And a second question, I understand we're not at an expansion mindset now, but what does that long-term planning look like? Is that still taking place, or has all of that been halted?
So maintenance is my priority, maintenance and getting all parks to a good condition. But we're still taking on the new projects that are part of the pot plan. So that's, that's one of those is the skate park. We're just going to do one or two of them at a time and finish them to completion before we take on the next. So that, so the plan that was set forth is a beautiful, creative plan that I still am moving forward with, just in a strategic, systematic way.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I would love to find some time for us to connect offline to see how we can help, how I can help, and particularly I won't speak for nobody else, how I can help, but also see how we can be creative with some of the more park deserts in parts of our community that may not necessarily require us to carry that load. I love to bring you that conversation, so.
We're doing something very recently, like that we're partnering with an outside organization and the county to do a park that is associated with an elementary school. That I think is pretty exciting, so I want to look into more of getting that into the Weathers Park deserts.
Yeah, and I think that's great because TPL's been doing something similar, and I would love to see how, and they've been using those public lands that we already have, like then one is in my district, Eastside Elementary, they're converting that to a park, and it's going to be open to the public, and it's right across the street from Ridgedale. And you know, I think about the partnerships we could in my district for things like Eastdale or Brainerd and things like that, and bringing those other partners. I'd love to connect with you all for, after we get over this budget. Yeah, not, no rush. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Councilwoman Burris.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. You've got a lot going on. I think I want to tack on to Councilman Elliott. It would be great to see a list of the pocket parks in our neighborhood and what the, what the maintenance plans are for those, because I think those are the ones that are, at least my district is going to be interested in seeing. We've got some, I know we have a couple of projects going on, and so we could help keep tabs on those, so it would be wonderful to see that list. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, we can do that.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you again, April, for your plan and your vision, and we look forward to your leadership of Parks and Outdoors.
Thank you, Council.
And with that, we will be adjourned until 5:50, and we will have an attorney-client meeting during the recess. And with that, we will be adjourned until 5:50 and we will have an attorney-client meeting during the recess.
We are back in session. Thank you everybody. Before we get started, I'd like to open the floor to Councilwoman Dolly.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. I do have to leave early, but I did want to address something. I received a few emails and calls about Battle Academy. So is anybody here with Battle Academy? If you would stand up please, so I can see everybody. So you can see me and I can see you. All right, thank you all so much. You can have a seat, I'm sorry. So I have to leave, but I received a few notes and things about it. Talked to a couple of parents. So I wanted to kind of clear the air, make sure everybody was on the same page about what has transpired. The Neighborhood, the South Coward Neighborhood Association wanted parking permits. They reached out to school later last year. Talked to the principal, everything seemed okay. The information was not shared back to the school. And so there crosshairs took place. At this juncture, we have, I have reached out to Superintendent Robertson, Principal Wayland, Carter, myself, and the Mayor's Administration. So we'll be meeting either the week of August 18th or August 25th to talk about the issue. Do understand, it is not a pressing issue in the sense that it's not happening right now. The information has not come to City Council yet. And even if it does, if we don't have a viable solution, we'll just defer it out until we do. So I want to let you all know that everything seems okay at the moment. We will be meeting again either the week of the 18th or the 25th. Is Emily here? Emily Byland. Okay, Emily. So we'll try to make sure we loop you back into it if you want to. I know sometimes it gets a little weird, so you know.
Oh no, yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, so trying to loop you back into it. And then we'll move forward from there. But as of right now, everything's good to go for when school starts. Whatever y'all have been doing, continue to do. And then we will circle back end of the month meeting. And then, like I said, if it comes before City Council, we'll just defer it out until we have a viable solution. So I wanted to make sure that was addressed. I saw you all earlier, didn't get a chance to talk to y'all when we had attorney-client. But I will make sure I circle back and then add you to the email chain for that one. So if there's any confusion about that, my apologies. There were pockets of information from a variety of sources. But I want to say thank you to the teachers and parents that I spoke to on Friday. Really tempered the situation and really added the additional perspective. So I appreciate you all very much. And email me if you have any questions or call or leave a message. And I'll be out for the rest of the week, but I'll be back next Tuesday. But Emily, I'll make sure I forward that last email to you. Okay, thank you all so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I will say I've gotten some calls, but you have addressed it, so I'm not calling you back.
Right, that's right.
I'll call you at nine o'clock tonight. I got your message. Okay, ordinance is on final reading. Madam Clerk, please read item 7A.
In order to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter VII, Section 7, 107, and Chapter VII, Section 7, 145, relative to urban chickens.
Move to approve. Councilwoman Henderson?
Make a motion to approve version 10.
All right, Council, we have a motion on the floor with a proper second to approve version 10. If you have any questions or comments, please hit your light. Say final read. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We are back in session. Thank you, everybody. Before we get started, I'd like to open the floor to Councilwoman Dotley.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. I do have to leave early, but I did want to address something. I received a few emails and calls about Battle Academy. So is anybody here with Battle Academy? If you would stand up, please, so I can see everybody. So you can see me and I can see you. All right. Thank you all so much. You can have a seat, I'm sorry. So I have to leave, but I received a few notes and things about it. Talked to a couple of parents. So I wanted to kind of clear the air, make sure everybody was on the same page about what has transpired. The Neighborhood, the South Cowart Neighborhood Association wanted parking permits. They reached out to school later last year. Talked to the principal. Everything seemed okay. The information was not shared back to the school. And so there crosshairs took place. At this juncture, we have, I have reached out to Superintendent Robertson, Principal Wayland, Carter, myself, and the Mayor's Administration. So we'll be meeting either the week of August 18th or August 25th to talk about the issue. Do understand, it is not a pressing issue in the sense that it's not happening right now. The information has not come to City Council yet. And even if it does, if we don't have a viable solution, we'll just defer it out until we do. So I want to let you all know that everything seems okay at the moment. We will be meeting again either the week of the 18th or the 25th. We can, is Emily here? Emily Byland. Okay, Emily. So we'll try to make sure we loop you back into it if you want to. I know sometimes it gets a little weird, so you know.
Oh, no, yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, so trying to loop you back into it. And then we'll move forward from there. But as of right now, everything's good to go for when school starts. Whatever y'all have been doing, continue to do. And then we will circle back end of the month, meeting. And then, like I said, if it comes before City Council, we'll just defer it out until we have a viable solution. So I wanted to make sure that was addressed. I saw you all earlier, didn't get a chance to talk to y'all when I was, we had attorney-client. But I will make sure I circle back and then add you to the email chain for that one. So if there's any confusion about that, my apologies. There were pockets of information from a variety of sources. But I want to say thank you to the teachers and parents that I spoke to on Friday, really tempered the situation and really added the additional perspective. So I appreciate you all very much. And email me if you have any questions or call or leave a message. And I'll be out for the rest of the week, but I'll be back next Tuesday. But Emily, I make sure I forward that last email to you. Okay, thank you all so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I will say I've gotten some calls, but you have addressed it, so I'm not calling you back.
Right, that's right.
I'll call you at nine o'clock tonight. I got your message. Okay. Ordinance is on final reading. Madam Clerk, please read item 7A.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter VII, Section 7, 107, and Chapter VII, Section 7, 145, relative to urban chickens.
Move to approve. Councilwoman Henderson?
Make a motion to approve version 10.
Second.
All right, Council, we have a motion on the floor with a proper second to approve version 10. If you have any questions or comments, please hit your light. Say final read. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Sounds like we've got two opposed, Madam Clerk. All right, motion passes. Item B.
An ordinance closing and abandoning the unopened right-of-way located in the 200 block of West 27th Street as shown on the attached map subject to certain conditions.
Thank you, Council. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. If you have any questions or comments, so hit your light. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C.
An ordinance closing and abandoning the unopened right-of-way located in the 600 block of North Chris Road as shown on the attached map subject to certain conditions.
Can I get a motion? Thank you, Council. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance. So as the rezoned property located at 2105 Randolph Street from IH Heavy Industrial Zone to TRN 3, Transitional Residential Neighborhood Zone.
Council, can I get a motion? Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we have no items on first reading. Let's move into resolutions. 9A, please.
A resolution authorizing the Executive Director of the Chattanooga Public Library to accept $430,500 from the State of Tennessee Office of the Secretary of State Tennessee Library and Archives for providing access to and/or circulating library materials in a variety of formats, providing special services to children and young people to promote general education support services, targeting materials in persons having difficulty using a library, and to the underserved.
Thank you, Council. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Public Works, let's take items B and C as a package, please, Madam Clerk.
Item B. A resolution authorizing administrative for the Department of Public Works to enter into a green grants project agreement with Chattanooga Food Center for Design and Installation of a Water Quality retrofit project at 901 Dots for an amount not to exceed $99,660. Item C. Resolution, amending resolution number 32547 to read as follows. A resolution authorizing a four-year contract for the On-Call Blanket Contracts for Design and Plan Production Services, contract number S25002101, with the following firms: One WSP USA; Two Barish Design Solutions, Inc.; Three Jacobs Engineering; Four Consort Engineers, LLC; Five Alfred Benetton Company; Six Arcadis US, Inc.; Seven Reagan Smith Associates, Inc.; Eight Lick Letter Jameson and Associates Engineering, Inc.; Nine Kimbley Horn and Associates, Inc.; and Ten Silver Site Design Group Company for professional services estimated at $1.5 million total for all ten professional firms for use by all departments.
Thank you, Council. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D.
A resolution authorizing administrative for the wastewater department to approve change order number four with Reese Young LLC of Sugar Hill, Georgia for contract numbers W17023201 and W18008201. MBW WTP improvement schedules A and B for incorporating CRF numbers 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21 for interior testing, concrete coatings, bypass piping, rerouting, and wiring. Revisions to the 84-inch pipe alignment for an increase of $1,486,622.69 for a revised contract amount of $12,426,299.90 with a contingency in the amount of $413,450 for a total amount of $12,839,
Thank you, Council. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do you have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E.
A resolution to amend resolution number 32381 to extend the date of the Tennessee Law Enforcement Hiring, Training, and Recruitment Program Grant period to February 1, 2025, and ending March 19, 2029 with no change in the amount.
Thank you, Council. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's take a look at purchases, please.
Good evening, Council. We have three purchases recommended for approval this evening. The first is from Chattanooga Police Department. This is a one-time purchase of ammunition. The award will go to Precision Delta Corporation in the amount of $112,458.22, utilizing the State of Tennessee ammunition contract. The next is for Public Works Fleet Management Division. This is a year for renewal with Detail Experts, who is requesting a price increase of 3% to align with current market conditions. The estimated annual cost will change to $65,000. Fleet Management Division has approved the increase. And the last is Parks and Outdoors. This is an increase of $113,043.14 for cement-treated soil for installation of synthetic turf at Warner Park softball fields. The new total spend will be $1,881,208.14.
Thank you, Council. You have heard the purchases. Thank you, Council. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do I have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I do have two sole source purchases to report. The first is from Wastewater Tennessee One Call System, Inc. Will provide 2025 member and database maintenance for the 811 statewide notification system. This is the call before you dig, location of underground utility lines. The total fee is $49,391.44. And the other sole source is for the police department. Accurate Law Enforcement will supply 56-Sauer P320 carry pistols for $26,000 as the sole authorized supplier of SIG products and accessories to law enforcement agencies in Tennessee.
Thank you very much.
There are no renewals, no RFPs, and no emergency purchases.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Time for committee reports. Councilwoman Elliott? Councilwoman Dotley?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We did have our budget education session three today. We will have our next budget session next Tuesday. No, yes, next Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. It will be a follow-up session from today. So looking forward to that conversation. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Burr?
Yes, Chairwoman Hill, we will have a planning and zoning committee meeting next week. Hopefully, all of you received your list from Brian Schultz from RPA with the list of applications that are coming up on the following Monday at the Planning Commission. So we'll be making presentations or asking for presentations from RPA on any of those cases that you want to hear more about.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Henderson? Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, we did have a meeting today of the Parks and Public Works Committee. We heard about the city's paving list and also about the vision and plan for our Parks Department.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harvey?
No report.
Councilwoman Clark?
No report, Madam Chair.
Vice Chairwoman Noel?
No report, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, I believe you have an announcement?
Yes, there has been a background investigation here for a retail liquor store. This is a wine and grocery store of a 7-Eleven DBA Speedway number 42185, number 1886 at 4862 Bonnie Oaks Drive in Chattanooga. And this applicant meets all the requirements here for this particular license. And there is a location that complies with our local ordinance, and we recommend that it be approved.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've now reached the portion of our meeting where we are happy to recognize persons who are here and wish to address the council. If you would like to address the council, please line up in front of the podium and listen while our attorney reads the rules.
Yes, sir.
At the end of each council business meeting, the chair will recognize members of the public who wish to address the council. And here's your rules. Each speaker wishing to address the council can only be recognized at the microphone provided up front. For that purpose, can't have more than three minutes to speak. And address the council only upon matters within their legislative and quasi-judicial authority and not on matters which are not under their authority or regulated by other governmental bodies or agencies. Do not engage in vulgar or obscene language nor use the floor to personally attack or personally denigrate others. And address your comments to the council as a whole and not towards individual council members. Lastly, do not engage in disorderly conduct or disrupting a public meeting, which is prohibited by Tennessee law. And someone commits that offense if a person substantially obstructs or interferes with the meeting by physical action or verbal utterance with the intent to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting or gathering. Having stated those rules, please go ahead, sir.
Hello, Andrew Jones, Timber Ridge Drive. I, well, I have a few concerns. What brought me here, I was watching online, the purchase of SIG firearms. I don't know if y'all have seen the, some of them have misfiring in the holsters of police officers. And recently, an Air Force airman was killed through the design of the trigger. I already spoke with the gentleman behind me. They know about the concern. I'm sure there's a lot of things that they can do on their end. And the last thing they want is, hey, man, we already got our SIGs. We worked really hard to get these things. They're top of the line. But SIG being recently a huge contract with the US military, so they're producing a lot more guns, therefore potentially supply and having malfunctions, just the fact that they're increasing their supply across the US. That, and then, bit of a sticky issue. Another reason why I wanted to come down here is Office of New Americans and putting the chicken law and everything else in different languages. I understand that with people that, the Latino population just across the United States as a whole. I'm from Houston, Texas. My favorite food's Mexican food. But at the end of the day, I think it's on the city, on the government as a whole, is to make sure folks can read English over putting things into Spanish. The last thing you want to do is alienate these people that are afraid to speak up, and they'll better understand in Spanish, totally understand that. But I would just look at a solution of making sure anyone that needs help reading English, going that route over giving the handicap, if possible. Primarily because if they can read English better, they can survive in our economy better and go into other avenues besides just what y'all are printing out. And then lastly, another big thing that brings me here. It concerns me. I see this at the county commission as well as today, where people that are elected, leaving early, showing up late, all of those things. Just want to make sure that all representatives, regardless of position or title, recognize that you're in charge of something much bigger than yourself. And being an elected representative is that you are representing the people that elected you, even the folks that are no-vote voters. Because I know turnout for the city election last year, this last year is a pretty blow. So appreciate y'all. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emily Byland. I am the PTA president at Battle Academy. And I know that all of you have heard something from someone at Battle Academy or someone associated with Battle Academy over the last probably week. And I deeply appreciate Councilwoman Dotley's comments before she left the meeting. And I just wanted to provide a little bit of context because I think it's important to know because in the future, as she said, there may be a vote. Battle has been on the corner of main and market streets for 25 years. It was there before the neighborhood was. And it is a Title I school. Forty-one percent of our students are eligible for SNAP. And 270 of those students are zoned for Battle. And while I appreciate Councilwoman Dotley's comments, the majority of those, actually, none of those students or their parents were consulted about what the impact parking permits in that neighborhood would have on the school community. I personally had to walk my autistic daughter into school every single day, starting from kindergarten until April of this last year, when she was finally able to let me drop her off on the car line, which was a big step for us. But I'm not the only one. There's so many other parents with children with disabilities. And then our school has a UTC Childcare Center and two pre-K classes. We are adding a class this year. And the pre-K classes and the UTC Childcare Center students all have to be walked in and signed in because some of the UTC Childcare students are infants, and they can't walk in on their own. And so it's really important for us to be able to access the school. And with 24/7 resident-only parking permits, that restricts access to the school, which is a problem. And in the long run, would so incredibly negatively impact the school. One of the things that I'm constantly hearing from other parents is that the parent engagement at Battle is unlike anywhere else. And then you add in the fact that we're a Title I school. Parents make the effort every single day to be there. And they also make the effort every single day to bring their kids there because we are one of the few, if not the only, magnet school in the county that does not have magnet transportation. And so while 270 of our students are zoned, the rest of them are magnet students, and we have over 500 students. So every single day, all of those magnet parents, either the parent, the guardian, I've heard of great-grandparents that bring kids to school every single day. And so this greatly impacts every single one of those families. I thank you for your time. I deeply appreciate it. I thank you for spending time listening to and reading all of the commentary from our parents. And hopefully, you understand how big of a deal this is for us.
My name's Andrea Killerbrew. I am a 25-year business owner here on the North Shore. I also have two sons at Battle Academy. We are directly affected by this parking. We are the magnet students, as she was speaking of. So I do have to bring my kids to school every day and pick them up every day. I have one special needs son who has therapies in the afternoons. I am not able to get through the car line and get to our therapies. So I have to either choose between, whoop, can I sneak a parking space here to pick him up from walkers and make it to our therapy? Or do I have to pick him up early from school where he misses school so that we can make it to therapy? If they allow this permanent permit parking, that will make it so much harder, not only for parents, but for our teachers that don't, cannot park in the parking lot because there's not enough spaces for our parents, our teachers, and our staff. I just really urge you guys to think about that. Also, is there somewhere that we can find some grace with the city of Chattanooga if we have a Battle parking thing? If for 15 minutes in the morning and 15 minutes in the afternoon, you don't write tickets? You know, because being a parent, every little bit counts. I can't pay $5 twice a day, five days a week. I can't. I own a small business. I put everything I can into that and into my kids. It's a big responsibility, having kids. So I would like for you guys to consider this before you vote. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chelsea McCamus, and I live in the Belvoir community. Although we live in Belvoir, my family has been a member of the Cowart community for the last 10 years because our children have gone to either the UTC Children's Center within Battle Academy or Battle Academy itself. We take our kids to school every day. We go to local restaurants. We go to local stores. And my husband works right down the road. So even though we don't live there, we're still members of the community. And at the very least, we ask that Battle Academy staff and parents also be given permits if this motion goes through. Disallowing parents who are often toting newborn babies and toddlers to the Children's Center or who are attending after-school functions and disallowing the staff from parking or potentially paying extra money to Republic Parking is completely unacceptable. The law at the school is half the size, in fact, less than half the size, to accommodate- The lot at the school is half the size, in fact, less than half the size, to accommodate the staff and faculty at UTC Children's Center and Battle Academy. So those teachers are parking on the street right now. It also only includes two parking spots for parents of the UTC Children's Center as designated spots to drop off and pick up their babies and toddlers. This permit would, motion would also affect the local businesses. For example, we are already seeing downtown businesses suffering because locals are having trouble finding parking, especially free parking, and cordoning off even more parking would be even worse for the area. We are moving in the wrong direction. So we're asking you, please, as members of the community, that you vote no on this parking permit motion.
Hello, my name is Joshua David Capelish. I'm an advocate for veterans who are unsheltered in this community. I'm also their VFW chaplain. The title of my speech is The Gray Matters. But before I get started, I want to thank everyone who attended the Fallen Five memorial service on July sixteenth. It was meaningful to see so many community members and families gather together to honor and remember our fallen heroes, heroes. We Chattanoogaans will never forget the Fallen Five or the unwavering dedication of our first responders. The gray matters, the gray matter between our ears and the gray matters in the sphere of social circumstances. Laws are black and white to ensure our civil society remains civil and effective. In the same way, we cannot command the reins, we cannot restrain all evils in society, but through collective vigilance, we possess the ability to realize harmony and peace. The gray matters often discussed in public are issues that are important and relevant. There is rarely a time when public matters are easily understood and resolved that creates a perfect solution. That is, except for a nine-one-one call. A dispatcher can take a call and immediately understand a problem, then dispatch appropriate, effective, and immediate resources. Every American knows what to do in an emergency. They call nine-one-one. They don't have to call and hope for a response, they expect it. First responders and veterans are some of our most important people in our society because of the benefit they provide. Greater love has no one than this, than to lay down one's life for his friends. John fifteen thirteen. First responders don't commit to a life of courageous endeavors for the sole benefit of the public. They must also be able to feed their families, live in adequate housing, and hope for a future in which we all prosper. These gray matters before us on budgetary allocation should not be left up to lengthy debates or bargaining. Safety, public security, and opportunity must be a priority. It is the foundation on which all civil societies thrive. It is my prayer that the executive branch and the legislative branch can cooperate considering the serious investments of salary for our most valuable people in our society. This is really not a matter of pay, it is a matter of respect. Our first responders deserve every single penny they earn, and an overwhelming majority of your voters feel that, too. We are among giants in this room. The Chattanooga City Council mission statement posted outside these doors says to promote an ethical, inclusive environment which enhances and sustains the well-being of all people. The first line below that states to significantly reduce crime, to make Chattanooga a safer community to live, work, and play. Thank you very much. God bless Chattanooga.
To our distinguished city council, with respect being given to our Chair Councilwoman Hill and to fellow Chattanoogaans, good evening. My name is Ernest Reed, and I serve as the Senior Pastor of Second Missionary Baptist Church located at twenty-three oh five East Third Street in the city. I'm standing before you this evening, representing my congregation in support of the senior tax freeze. It has been said that you have not because you ask not. Therefore, my request is that you will consider the tax freeze, but also ensure that the income level is raised from forty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to sixty thousand, the most allowed under state law. Furthermore, I would ask you to consider instituting the freeze prior to any tax increase that might occur in this budget cycle. This would provide qualifying seniors with a peace of mind and much-needed relief as they manage limited resources. I certainly believe that each of you are men and women of goodwill who hold your seats because you truly desire to do good. As you carry out the duties of your office, things are often weighed on the scales of politics and finance, and while these are viable scales of consideration, I would ask that you would consider this issue also to be weighed on the scales of ethics. What is good? What is right? And what should be done for those who have bore the burden in the heat of the day? While many of us believe that we are forever young, time is working on all of us, and so I would implore you to treat our aging population as you would like to be treated when the winter of life has fallen upon you. May God bless you in your godly efforts. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening. My name is Curtis Lancaster. I live in the twenty-two hundred block of Tunnel Boulevard. I was hoping to talk to my councilperson, but they left. My problem is with speeding in the twenty-two hundred block of Tunnel Boulevard. They took out, I haven't been, I normally be here on meetings, but I haven't been here because of the passing of my sister, and it was the first opportunity I've had since then, to address the council or to try to address my councilman, but they took out my mailbox, and I had to, I had to, because they didn't have, the person didn't have insurance, I had to pay for my replacement mailbox. Not only that, I got a video of a problem I've been having with, with the flooding of my property, and I wanted, you know, like I said, I just wanted to bring that to the council, but them two items, the speeding and the flooding of my property. Thank you. God bless you.
Mr. Lancaster, Mr. Lancaster, what, what district are you in, sir?
Sir.
You said your representative wasn't here. What district are you in?
Five.
Five, okay. We have some colleagues who are headed to a National League of Cities meeting in Houston, which is why they're, they've had to leave a little early, but.
I do have a video of the flooding.
I'm thinking that we could get you connected with, there we go, with Jeremy Wood back there at the end of the meeting, and he could talk with you, and also he can provide you with Councilman Clark's email address as well. Thank you for being here. Oh, and Councilman Elliott? Yeah, go ahead.
You, sir, in addition to Jay, Councilman Clark and I share Tunnel Boulevard, so let's talk afterward, okay? If he can't help you, I'll help you. You got somebody. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Marie Mott, District Six. In the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, the city put five point eight million into the police and fire pension fund. By fiscal year twenty twenty-two, that figure had grown to ten point two million. This year's allocation is eighteen million. That is a two hundred and ten percent increase in just eight years, and that represents a compounded annual growth rate of fifteen point two percent. In plain English, that is a liability. Let's put that into perspective, Council. Eighteen million in emergency funding is equivalent to twelve percent of the police and fire operational budget. It's five point five times the allocation for early learning, and it exceeds the entire Parks and Outdoors budget, which services all of our city's residents. On this current trajectory, we will probably pay next year twenty point seven million, and by the time we get to fiscal year twenty thirty, it'll be about thirty million. This has impacted things like our bond rate. I know that was written about last year while I wasn't here in terms of a double-A-plus bond rating, and how that impacts our ability to be able to have increased percentages in terms of our projects that we have. This is such a liability that, I hate to say it, previous administrations have continuously kicked this can down the road, and our city council, as well as the mayor's office, has been fiscally irresponsible for restructuring the pension. It has to happen. How that happens, it really is not a consequence of the citizens. All that we know is that we're paying for a stadium, we're paying for a lot of things in terms of services, you're having a conversation about raising our taxes, we're talking about tax frees for our seniors. The reality is, is we have to have a conversation about what we can no longer afford to do. And the only person who I have heard talk about this is the chairperson, who said frankly that it's a liability, it's an existential threat to the financial responsibility and health of our city. So my request is, is that we don't continue to kick this can down the road because it's going to cost us more money, and we can't afford that, and that the city work with the mayor's office to do the hard thing, and that is to have a discussion about how we're going to stop the bleeding of this pension fund.
Good evening to the Chattanooga City Council. I am Reverend Anne Jones Pierre, and currently I'm serving as President of the Chattanooga Hamilton County Branch of the NAACP. I'm speaking to you on a matter that is important to all citizens of Chattanooga. The matter is the insufficiency of the defined benefit retirement funds of the city of Chattanooga workers. Not only is this issue detrimental to all city employees who are members, but to the citizens of the city who support the funds through their taxes. The request tonight is that a complete analysis of the funds begins by the city council. The future benefits are underfunded. You are being asked to initiate this study because each of you represent a group of citizens we voted you in to office for such a time as this. Each employee of the city expects a retirement check at the appropriate time, and each citizen expects their taxes to be maintained at the lowest level and as predictable as possible. Just to mention, one thing that can happen if this matter is not handled timely is a lowering of the bond rating of the city, which means higher interest rates on debt issued by the city. It has not been a year since the city's bond rating was lowered from triple-A to double-A+ In fact, the rating was lowered and reported on September eleven, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anybody else who'd like to address the council? Council, I'm seeing no one.
We're adjourned.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.